All right, we're going to get started here. Welcome, everyone, to this meeting of the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners, October 10, 2019. By way of introduction, we've got Leslie Hervey to my far right. She is filling in for the clerk to the commission. She is the assistant to the clerk of the commission. To my immediate right is Commissioner Todd Portune. To my immediate left is the vice chair of the commission, Stephanie Summerau-Dumas. Next to her is Jeff Aluta, the county administrator, and legal counsel, Michael Friedman, is sitting on my far left. We start our meetings with silent prayer and the pledge of allegiance, so please stand if you can. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'm going to move that we approve of the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summerau-Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Portune?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. I've got three stacks of speakers' cards. Two stacks are related to the public hearings that we are about to conduct. I have one card, though, that is not relative to those public hearings, and I think we're going to do that one first and then move right into the public hearings. So with that, Rosalyn Foltz is here. She is here to give us an update, is my understanding. So, welcome to the county commission. You've got the pleasure of the floor for two minutes.
Well, I offered President Dreehouse to go last, but thank you for the courtesy.
I think he'll be the quickest.
Okay, absolutely. And on behalf of Congressman Steve Chabot, I want to thank you, President Dreehouse, and Commissioners Dumas and Portune for allowing me to come and just basically cover the fact that the congressman has a Cincinnati-Hamilton County district office located on the 30th floor of the Coogler Tower at 441 Vine Street. And for the benefit of some of the people in the audience today and those at home, we can be reached if you have an issue with any department or agency of the federal government or the military at (513) 684-2723. Our primary mission is problem-solving for constituents who have issues with the federal government or some branch of the military. But that number can also be used if citizens want to weigh in on a specific bill that's pending in the U.S. House of Representatives, and they have a preference for how they'd like the congressman to vote. And it's also a number that's available for people who want to weigh in on any issue concerning the federal government. I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak, and I know you have a full agenda. I appreciate the courtesy on behalf of Congressman Chabot. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. All right. We are going to move into our public hearings. Our first item is the hearing to consider the Coogler Mill Improvement Project. Engineer Ted Hubbard is here.
Yes.
Give us an overview of this issue.
Tim Gilde is actually going to give the overview.
Tim Gilde is here. Give us an overview of this issue.
Tim is the master when it comes to establishments, but this is a project, we'll say, that we've been working on very closely with Sycamore Township, and so it's been in the making for years. So, Tim, Tim will do the...
Great, thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Trying to do this quickly, because I know you've got a lot of speakers. Don't want to lose that. Okay, you've got two plats behind you. The one on your right basically shows the construction that is taking place. There is, if you want me to get my papers out, there is some minor widening on that plat, which indicates on both sides, like a foot, maybe two feet of widening. There are curbs to be put along the north side. Orientation purposes, this is Blue Ash Road. Montgomery Road is at this point. This open area right here, if you're familiar with the area, is the bridge that is over So what you see, you can see the driveways that will be adjusted. Basically, it's mostly apron areas. There will be some widening at the various intersections to enable a little bit wider radii to be put in. And as I say, there will be a sidewalk along the north side. There is no sidewalk along the south side, just along the north. And there will be various, if you look really close, there's some blue lines. Those are storm sewer improvements that will be taking place. That is basically a summation of the construction plans. The left-hand plat shows the easements and the right-of-way that are required. On that plat, the red areas, and I'll try and point one out, I think there's one right up in this area, those are permanent highway easements that will be acquired. There's some blue basically sticking out, and sort of hard to see. I think there's one right there, if I'm not mistaken. Those are permanent storm sewer easements. The rest of them, the green areas, are temporary construction easements. As you can see from this plat, much of the work is within the existing right-of-way of Coogler Mill Road. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can you help us understand the process related to the community?
To the what?
The community.
Okay. This is, our environment is in the road and the rehabilitation of the road. Because of this establishment, we did try and send out letters to all the abutting property owners. This hearing was advertised, which is the only legal requirement. We did go out and stake various lines in the field. The letter gave the people a contact person, that was me. In your packets, yeah, the one right there stapled together, there's a two-page, or two-sided summary of the project, giving you some details on it. I received three emails, and I told the people that if I received an email, I would get them to the commissioners. One was for, one was against, and to be quite frank, one I'm not really sure on. So you can read it and make your own judgment. We did receive several other emails asking for information. Those were responded to, and like I said, they didn't express an opinion for or against or mutual agreement, whatever. They just wanted some information what was happening on. We had several people come in and talk to us at our office in Burlington.
Okay, great, thank you. So you will be sticking around, along with the engineer, because we do have a number of speakers' cards.
Yeah, I believe Sycamore Township, yeah, Sycamore Township's represented here, too.
Okay.
Could I ask Tim a question?
Yes. We've got a couple of questions before you leave the podium.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Just a question about the right-hand side. How many driveways is this impacting, and which are private and which are, like, business driveways? Are all residential driveways?
Number-wise, I'd be taking a guess. I think we sent out somewhere in the neighborhood of about 80 letters, 85 letters. And we went all the way, actually, it might be a little less than that, because we try and expand beyond the project limits. Possibly somebody just on the other side of Blue Ash Road, who's not affected by the project, might have got a letter, just so that they don't look down the road and see a whole bunch of stakes and don't know what's going on. So I'd have to say there's probably about 80 driveways. And Steve, please help me if I'm wrong, I think the only commercial property is really up in this area. Most of the rest of it is residential. There are some, there is one major driveway, and I forget exactly where it is, that serves, like, a condo unit-type thing. So it's, you can, I think there's two of them, actually, that you can consider roads, but they're private roads, because it's just a condo. So that would be off the top of my head.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Portune?
I just wanted to add to the public record of communications on this. Just today, I received two emails in favor of the project. I'll make sure that those are copied and forwarded and are part of the official record.
Would you do me a favor and send those to me also?
Sure will.
Thank you. As I said, those are the only three emails that I got, that I received that expressed an opinion.
Right.
If you want other ones, I had about, maybe, I'd be guessing, four or five, but they were just strictly asking for information, particularly, how is my property going to be affected? What are you doing with my driveway, et cetera, et cetera?
Okay, thank you.
If you want to see those...
Tim, I'll do that. I'll send them to the engineer's office and to you personally, and then, Madam President, send them to the board. I just want to make sure that the receipt of those was a part of the official record as well, for this public hearing.
I have one as well, so I wonder if we're all getting the same one. So we'll have to, yeah, coordinate. Okay.
Any other questions?
Not at this moment. All right. We're going to go into the speakers' cards. Forgive me, they're in the order that I think we received them, so we will do our best. And if you have not filled out a speaker's card and you would like to comment, please feel free to do so. They're right behind this poll here. And get them to the clerk, and we'll make sure that you have an opportunity to speak. You have an opportunity to speak for two minutes. There is an indicator up here. It's red, yellow, and green, pretty straightforward as to how you're doing on your time, in case you're in the middle of saying what you want to say and you're wondering how much time you've got left. So our first speaker is Nancy Albrecht. Good afternoon.
Hello. I'm Nancy Albrecht, and I've lived at 5080 Coogler Mill Road for 28 and 1/2 years. And I like the country feel. That's why I moved there. Didn't have sidewalks. It reminded me of living out in the country. And I'm against the sidewalks. I'm against widening the road. I do want the road fixed, though, because it's in really bad shape. I have some neighbors that have not been able to attend, go to the engineering office or come to this hearing, because they're working. Kind of the timing is bad. I stated to the trustees about a year ago, more than a year ago, they had a hearing, that I was against the sidewalks. There were quite a few people that went in and gave feedback. I don't know if you've seen that feedback or not. I also went to the engineering office here recently and provided feedback that I was against the sidewalks. They want to take an additional 10 feet of my front yard for temporary easement, and that's a third of my front yard now, between the current easement and the additional easement that they want. And I just feel like, in general, there's been a lot of issues around, on Coogler Mill and down where Mercy Hospital was, and even behind Coogler Mill, where the trustees are really not listening to the residents. And I've tried to attend all the zoning meetings on that. So we kind of feel like, in these meetings here, you're really, you're having them during the day when people are working, and you're not hearing the voices of everyone. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Our next speaker is Constance Ellis. Good afternoon.
Hi. I'm at 5051 Coogler Mill, like, right across the street from Nancy. So I guess mine were more questions. The temporary easement, does that mean that, because it comes pretty far down into the front yard, is that, I didn't understand by the papers that we were sent, is that something that you would just, if they're only widening it, like, a foot or two on my side, what is that coming all the way down? And what about mature trees that are there? Do they cut those down? Or, I just don't understand that whole process, so I didn't know if somebody could explain that.
Yeah, Tim, will you come forward? Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
The temporary construction easement, we can think of it as a rental. It's a work zone. It enables the county, the contractor, our agent, to get onto private properties, say, and most of the temporaries expand along the driveway areas, because we want to go back and make a smooth transition. That property does not change hands. The abutting property owner owns that property. They're basically just renting us that property to allow the workers to get on it, to do whatever work they want to do. So after the construction is finished, that temporary construction easement becomes null and void.
So there was a question about trees?
The trees, I'd have to...
Are there mature trees in that area?
That I can't answer without looking at a set of plans. Go upstairs, I can tell them if there are trees, any private improvements, whatever it might be. That is part of what the appraiser and the negotiator will come up with. If the trees are on private property outside the right-of-way lines, and they would be affected by whatever grading or whatever work is being done, the appraiser tries to set a value on that tree or trees, and that is part of the negotiation. If the tree is inside the right-of-way, it's technically our tree. And if it has to be taken out, it will be taken out with no compensation to the property owner.
Thank you.
But to answer a specific question, I have to look at the set of plans. I just don't remember that one that well.
Just to, Tim, to follow that up, I assume that you or others in the engineer's office, though, will not take down a tree unless it's absolutely necessary as part of the work. So just because a tree might fall within an area encompassed by a temporary easement does not mean that we will, as a matter of course, take down that tree.
We do not take the trees down unless we have to, with one caveat. If the grading might go around the tree or extend beyond the tree, it depends on the type of tree. Some trees have roots that go down, that are taproots that sink down into the ground. They aren't as affected by doing a couple inches or whatever, a fill or cut above that tree. Other trees, the roots go out, and they are majorly affected by doing anything above that tree. If it's on the borderline, and it is on private property, we have in the past gone to the property owner, the negotiator goes to the property owner, finds out about the tree, comes to us. We will, if it is possible, leave the tree, but we tell the property owner in all honesty, don't come back to us in a year or two and tell us your tree is dead, because there's nothing we can do. It's on private property, you know, this is what we think we ought to do, but if you want the tree there, we'll try and do our best to save the tree. What we're afraid of is that two years later, especially if it's a ground-surface-type root, it dies, and then the person comes back and says, "Take my tree out." Well, that's private property. We can't get on private property. The contractor's gone. He can't do anything, so we have a real muddy mess, is what it would be. So we try and save the tree, but in all, we are honest with the property owner as to what our opinion is, as to whether that tree should stay or go.
But you, I think the point I'm trying to elicit, and you explained it very well, Tim, so this goes to Ms. Ellis. The county engineer's office will do whatever they can in one-on-one, face-to-face negotiations with you, if a tree is involved, to try to save the tree. All right?
We take all measures to do so.
Yes. Okay? Yep.
Maybe we circle back after to make sure we're talking about apples to apples. Yeah. Okay. Our next speaker is Steve Smith. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I live at 8743 Antrim Court. I've been in the Deer Park School District area for my entire life, the 56 years. I was on the school board for nine of those years, and I'm currently on the board of directors at Great Oaks, representing Deer Park. This Coogler Mill is within the school district. One of the things we've been doing inside the school district area over the years is looking at the safe routes for school. Deer Park is a non-busing, walking district, and one of the things that this project will do by adding that sidewalks in the areas which we've done on, which has happened in Sycamore Township on Galbert Road, it's happening on Sycamore Road, is to create a sidewalk network where our students and our residents can safely walk on the main roads. Coogler Mill is 35 miles an hour, so it is a road that people do walk on to get between streets, to get across the streets. So it's important to have a safe place for our children to move between streets on this type of road. I'm also a road cyclist, and I use Coogler Mill. In its current condition and state of disrepair, it certainly is a hazard where I cannot ride on that right edge or whatever. So I think having that little bit of widening on the road, having the pavement improved, will help someone like me on those conditions. And generally, as they do the project and they do these improvements, I think it will improve the safety for the pedestrians and for the vehicular traffic that's traveling, including the cyclists.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Our next speaker is Jay Janis Jr. Good afternoon.
I'm Jay Janis Jr. I live at 4462 Daffield Avenue, Sycamore Township, Ohio. Been a resident there a little over 30 years. I'm representing myself and all the citizens of Sycamore Township today, so I'm not here representing any particular group. I would ask the three of you to vote in support of improvements as proposed for this project. I live within probably a quarter mile of one end of it. I frequently travel over that road. I was representative of Sycamore Township Government here today, to and from the Sycamore Township Administration building. It's about a mile away from my house on Kenwood Road. The road is supposed to, it's 35 mile-an-hour speed limit, and that's almost impossible to even come close to if you want to not incur damage on your cars. Sierra County Sheriff is here. We're contracted with the Sheriff's Department for police, fire, law enforcement. In an emergency, you want to get to the caller, their dispatch, as fast as possible. To me, they would incur damage on their vehicles, and it would slow their arrival time due in case of emergencies. I'm a frequent attendee to many Sycamore Township public meetings. In the past, our township administrator has said, even though this is a county road, when I asked one time why the county can't do this 100% funding, and again, I don't want to come here today as a he said, they said, but I was told that the county did not believe this is a, in their priorities of selections, this road was in, met that priority. And I can tell you from personal experience, it's a main east-west thoroughfare in Sycamore Township, about midway through the township, and it's in desperate need of rehabbing. Along with some of the previous speakers about the sidewalk, there's no sidewalks. And I've been to meetings different times, days or nights, going through that road. Often, there's people that are walking along the road. Difficult to see. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Yes.
Just for people to know, the fact sheet that I mentioned that the commissioners have, they are, there's a pack...
On the table?
Back on this table, if they want to grab them. It gives the, some outline of what is going to be done. It also, on the backside, has a prospective schedule, if they want to know that.
Okay.
I forgot to mention that when I was up.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Roger Dumford. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for this chance here. I've been living in this neighborhood over 40 years, and I tend to agree with the first lady, I think Ms. Applegate, whatever. We moved there because the town is a small community. We're almost like a community within a community. It used to be called Rossmoine. There was never sidewalks there. The roads changed some. The road does need some repair. However, the proposal they're having, if they widen that road, I know, I'm there, I work from my house, I'm there 24/7 most of the time, I see what's going on. We don't have walkers between that area. So it sounds like to me, it depends on what part of Coogler Mill you live on. I'm at 4554 Coogler Mill, the section between Pine and Blue Ash Road. Through there, there's absolutely no parking available on our side, the north side, where they're proposing to put the sidewalk. Also, by widening the street, you're going to increase the speed going down there. We've got people racing down there, motorcycles, cars, everything, flying right now. If you make it wider, it's going to make it more easy for them to be flying down the road. As far as the walking traffic, anybody who ever walks, it's always on the south side, along with no sidewalk. Sections of Coogler Mill does have a sidewalk. From Blue Ash Road to Plainfield Road has a sidewalk. It's always been there. And our section, we just don't need it. We don't have, all the kids are grown now. Three houses up from me, you're in Indian Hill District, they go the opposite way. So any kids coming in will be going there. There are very few houses that would need sidewalks for the school district. And my kids went to school there. They never had sidewalks. Everything was fine. So with my work, it's going to create a problem with what they want to do, because of, I work out of my shop, my basement down there. When they change all this, take the road, there's not even room to park a van in there, and I bring furniture in. So that's going to create a problem. The sidewalk's going to create a problem, even getting the things, garbage out and everything like that. The other thing, the yard. If they cut in that yard, it's been built in 1946. When they tear that down, that's going to be my whole front yard, because it's just fill, from what I'm told.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Merrill Tomlin. Good afternoon.
Madam President?
Yes.
Mr. Dumford, I was reading his statement in here about the parking, and I was just wondering, before you leave, how would the parking be impacted? Would it be a temporary inconvenience? He indicated that he had talked to you about the parking. Sorry for interjecting.
I'll disturb your papers. Across his property, there is going to be a curb, vertical curb. He's parking right now in the right-of-way. We don't, we're not doing anything about acquiring additional property from his particular property.
Okay.
He is going to be, where he is parking, is going to be impacted, because right now there is no curb. It's just pull off the edge of the road, you go into the grass, and you park, excuse me.
Okay.
There will be a concrete curb constructed on that side of the road, because he's on the north side, and then the walk will be behind that curb. So he will not be able to park in the grass where he is now parking.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Apologize.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Merrill Tomlin.
All right. So I live at 6700 Coogler Mill by Bob Meyer Park. I haven't made up my mind as yea or nay, so what I do have is some questions for Mr. Gilde. So first of all, are the plans going to be made available online somewhere? I mean, other than, you know, in paper downstairs?
No, the plans are not available online. We have plans with us. After this hearing is concluded, or whatever the commissioners do, we will go back upstairs and we can answer specific questions.
Would it be possible to get a large format print like one of those?
I could probably have that printed out, yes. But that's, you can see, that's six foot long, so that's a, I mean, I don't know which one you need. Or we can just Xerox your particular property.
Okay. I ask my question then. Could I contact the office downstairs at their convenience and have that done? That doesn't have to happen today.
You'd have to contact me. Contact me at either the telephone number or the email address, and we can make arrangements to do something.
Okay, thank you. The tree removal, you mentioned it in the easement. Is that the permanent easement or the temporary easement?
Tim, just won't you stay?
Yeah, why don't you stay here?
I don't know why you keep walking away, but anyway, just stay there.
Trees, whether they're, if they're in the existing right-of-way, it's not a compensatable item, if they have to be taken. If they are in either the temporary easement or a permanent easement, as I mentioned, there's a couple permanent highway easements. There are some permanent storm sewer easements. If they're on private property and affected by anything, it is a compensatable item. Does that, is it...
That's good enough.
All right.
If they're right up against the sidewalk, still talking about trees, in other words, I don't want to be assessed 10 years from now from a sidewalk buckling issue with a tree that was deemed capable.
Well, and therein, it goes back to what I said before, if it's that close to the sidewalk, we would probably take it.
Okay.
If the property owner insists that that tree has to stay, then we talk about it. And that's what I mentioned, we try and be honest with the property owners, that we think it ought to come out, because like you say, depending upon the root system, it could push the sidewalk up, or it could kill the tree. Now, I will say at this point in time, that Sycamore Township, their policy, at least currently, and Tracy, Steve, jump in here, they repair the sidewalks or replace the sidewalks across residential property, even on a county road. So as far as Sycamore Township currently is concerned, if the sidewalk goes in, and life expectancy can be 20 to 50 years, a lot of it has to do with how much salt does the property owner go and throw on the sidewalk? If he throws 10 pounds of salt for a quarter inch of snow, he's going to kill the sidewalk. But Sycamore Township does go in when the sidewalk is marked for replacement, and they are responsible for it.
At no cost to the resident?
At no future cost to the resident, right.
Let's hold first one second, because I'm going to ask you to come forward in a minute. Okay, do you have another question?
Any more?
Yes, almost done.
Okay.
Cover that one. So specifically, there's a gravel drive at Bob Meyer Park. The sidewalk will, so it's not a concrete cut, it's a, well, it says asphalt in the plans, but it's really asphalt-gravel at this point. That'll be covered by the regular sidewalk, or will that be a gap?
If I understand the question, the sidewalk is continuous, there will be no gaps except at intersections. We do not put back in gravel driveways, so if we're showing asphalt, and I assume it's going to go, we'll put it back in in asphalt, even though it might be gravel.
It'll be concrete apron. It'll be concrete apron.
Concrete apron with asphalt. We don't, we don't put gravel back in. So it's either going to be asphalt or concrete, depending on what it is.
That's all the questions ahead. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. There goes Tim again. He's running away, running away from the podium. No, you're fine. I know, well, we can't see you anyway back there. Our next speaker is Tracy Cullums. That's, yeah, okay, so you are with Sycamore Township.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Would you please identify your role in Sycamore Township?
My name is Tracy Cullums. I'm Assistant Administrator at Sycamore.
Very good.
I also live in the township. I live at eighty-five sixty-three Plainfield Road, which is just around the corner from Coogler Mill. A couple of things that I can address, we do replace sidewalks on the county roads at no cost to the residents. And during a project like this, we also have a tree replacement program that if there is a tree that has to be taken out on private property, there is compensation for it, or they can wish for us to replace it. Now, of course, if we're taking down a forty-foot tree, we're not going to replace it with a forty-foot tree, but we do have a tree replacement program also for trees that are lost because of the construction. So we've been working with the county, we've been working on this project through engineering since about two thousand fifteen. They are, their portion is for the road repair. Ours is for the storm sewer caused by the new sidewalk, the sidewalk and the curb. There's a grant that's taking care of fifty percent, the rest is split, thirty percent for the township, twenty percent for the county, which is half of the, half of the road repair for the county, half the sidewalk and storm sewer for us. The township is definitely in favor of this project. Trustees were approached by different residents who have been saying it's not safe to walk on that street. I know it has a country feel, or at least it used to, but traffic has definitely increased a lot over the years. It's gotten faster, it's gotten heavier, and it's just really for safety that we want to put sidewalks in and make it a walkable community. We're doing that, we've done that on Galbraith Road, we're doing it presently on Sycamore, and there's a lot of residential properties on Coogler Mill that we would like to do this for also. So if you have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. I actually do have two questions for you. Can you tell us, did you have public hearings related to this project?
Yes, we did. It's been probably a year and a half, two years, since we've had those.
And were those at the meetings of the township trustees?
Yes.
Okay. And folks were notified of those meetings? I just want to make sure the public had an opportunity.
It was an open house where everybody came, the engineers were there, we had boards up.
Okay.
Everybody was invited, notices went out to all the businesses, all the property owners. There was quite a few in attendance.
Okay. And then the trustees, did they take a vote to support the project?
They did not take a vote.
They're not required to take a vote?
Right.
I guess they're way in on this. Okay. My other question for you is related to the sidewalks. Is there a connectivity issue here where there's an attempt to connect one sidewalk to another sidewalk and you've got a gap here? Is that the situation?
Well, the, there's sidewalk on the far west end of Coogler Mill, and there's sidewalk on Blue Ash Road, and this is connecting to Kenwood Road, which there's no connectivity to right now, and then farther east to Montgomery Road, which we just finished putting sidewalks on.
Okay.
And then the sidewalk is on the north side, mainly for constructability. Grades on the south side don't work, and also there's a bridge over the interstate that it has to be on the north side there.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for being here. That's the last card that I have related to this issue. Are there any other folks here that would like to speak to this issue that didn't fill out a card? Yes, ma'am.
I will.
Oh, and yes, sir. Come on forward and we'll have you fill out a card after you testify. Get the pleasure of the floor for two minutes. Thank you.
My name is Chris Vogt at fifty-six hundred Coogler Mill, and I'm overall for the improvements, but I am concerned at the high speed of traffic that goes through, especially between the areas of Kenwood and Montgomery Road, the connector areas. It just seems the traffic flow has increased tremendously and the speed has increased tremendously. I think these improvements will help, but I don't think that it will address the speed because I think people are using it as a connector and a shortcut, who are maybe not residents and not that type of thing. And it is a concern that I think should be addressed or looked at.
Okay.
That's my big concern.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And would you please fill out a card?
Absolutely.
Back on the table. Was there a gentleman in the back? Please come forward.
Good afternoon. You have the pleasure of the floor for two minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Joseph Thomas, and I have an ownership interest in the building at eight-three-one-one Montgomery Road, which is the connection from Coogler Mill to Montgomery Road. I also am a practicing physician in an office building that is owned, is leased by TriHealth. It's an orthopedic office there. We have cars that enter and exit the parking lot from Coogler Mill. The concern here is what thoughts have been placed for that particular business. I do not believe Mr. Gilday alluded to that building as being a business building that would be affected in this project.
Okay. Do you want him to come forward now, or do you want to take it up after the meeting?
I think for the record, I would appreciate it.
Okay. Tim, come on forward.
Okay. Clarifying, if you will, what is your question about driveway access?
Driveway access for patients getting into that office building.
He is at, let me grab my thing here. If I'm knowing which one, this is Montgomery Road, north being this way, you're right in this area, correct?
That's correct, sir.
And you've got a detention base in there. Our inspectors will be on the job on a project of this magnitude at any time the contractor is working, and they will work with the various property owners to maintain access, especially if the driveway, for example, oops, where'd my button go? I think this is his driveway right here. It's usually wide enough that we work on one side, keep the other side open, when the other side is cured or in place, you flip-flop. But we are very conscious about people having to park. Now, I sort of segues into maintenance of traffic. There are various options that we'll be utilizing on this. One will be a one-way pattern at times. One will be blocking off Coogler Mill to traffic across the bridge here. This will be basically a two-way pattern, but it'll be blocked off at the bridge or the, I think it's a temple that is there, if I'm not mistaken. And then one-way patterns going through the other ways. But we are very conscious of people having to get into their driveways. We might take various measures. If there's places they can park, we will provide those temporarily. But yeah, we do our best. Sometimes it's a lot tougher than other times, but with a wider driveway, it's usually part with construction.
As a follow-up question, I would only ask, do you have a timeframe of how long something like that would normally take for a specific section of that project that would affect traffic?
I believe it's a concrete driveway, somebody else, it's a concrete driveway. Usually with a concrete driveway, it's about a day or two to take it out, a day to form it, or prepare the subgrade and form it. And then it's usually, if you're talking about a lot of traffic or heavier traffic, it's about three or a four-day period to let it cure, at least to the point that the traffic won't do damage to the apron. So you're looking maybe a week, maybe a little over a week for a one-way pattern. You know, and that's just to protect the driveway too, so that it cures enough to hold up.
And do we have any other options in order about patients to be given any help? Montgomery Road currently has a one-way in, one-way out.
Well, I would have to say the answer to that would probably be no because Montgomery Road is under the states, and there is no way that we can override what the state has specified for that. I know you have another entrance up near, there's only one way in.
That's the one I'm saying.
Yeah. It's in and out. I don't think we can adjust that, no.
We can take up some other questions.
Yes, thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. All right. That is the end of the speakers' cards, and so I don't know if there are any comments or questions from the members of the board, and what the preference is to either continue the hearing or close the hearing.
I have no additional questions or comments. I'm just kind of weighing whether or not it's in our best interest to continue the hearing because it was notified that people should be here. So I haven't really heard anybody that's really adamant against it, the residents. There are some concerns that it sounds like could be worked out, so I don't have any additional questions.
Can you tell us, Ted or Tim, if there are any, what?
We're at the.
Well, I know. I told you to stay. I don't know. So what are the timing issues here relative to the project?
On the backside of that information sheet, mine's buried someplace. If I remember right, construction is scheduled, or bidding is scheduled for June of two thousand twenty, I believe. Somebody help me?
Here it is.
Oh, thank you. Construction is scheduled, or bidding is scheduled for two thousand twenty. So between now and two thousand twenty, we're not under, let's say, a tremendous time crunch. We do have to get appraisals done, get the negotiations done, get the utilities moved, et cetera, so that knock on wood, if everything goes right, the utilities are out of the way before our contractor wants to start. Construction would probably start in July of two thousand twenty, and it would probably carry over into two thousand twenty-one.
Okay.
So I guess, my question to you is if you're talking about continuing the meeting for a week or two, it would probably not have tremendous setbacks on the schedule.
That is what my question was.
That's where.
Okay. Commissioner Porten, do you have any comments or questions?
I don't have any questions. Comments, I want to thank everybody for coming down here today and offering your input on this. It's been a good dialogue, and on the question of continuing the hearing open for another week or two weeks versus closing it today, I'd like to know at least what the outcome is of the expected, and I'm sure there will be some one-on-one conversations, Tim, you're going to have with some of the people who are here today, or maybe others following up.
At their leisure?
Yeah.
We'd be happy to meet with them. I've met with some of them at our Burlington facility.
Question. I'm just, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just saying, I'm assuming that there will be some, and to the extent that it's necessary to have that be a part of the public record before we close this, I think it may be. There is, I mean, I get a sense that the majority of the speakers and those that live along Coogler Mill are in favor, but there's certainly a strong sentiment that's been expressed by those that are right in the area of the improvement, and the specific questions that were raised about elements of the project and its impact on them. I'd like to see that be a part of the public record before we close the hearing.
So I'm hearing that we should continue the hearing and give people an opportunity to get some questions answered, and anybody else that would like to, to weigh in. We understand that this is not the most convenient time all the time for individuals, but we always have these during our regular meetings. So why don't we continue the hearing for one week, and then we will see how we do next week and make a decision then as to whether or not to continue or close.
As far as making it part of the record, a lot of these have been oral conversations where the people came in and there was no record kept of what they asked or.
What I'm saying, Tim, is that you, or they, or both, would have an opportunity to report, I'm asking of the engineer's office, that you prepare some summary of, for our benefit, of what the conversations were, and we could make that written summary a part of the record.
Do you have emails that we sent back to people? I'll send those too.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So I'm going to move that we continue the hearing pursuant to, or to consider the Coogler Mill Improvement Project for one week.
Second.
Yep.
Commissioner Greenhouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summerville?
Yes.
Commissioner Porten?
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here. We really appreciate it. You are welcome to leave if you'd like. We are going to proceed into a budget hearing, so.
So it's going to continue, so it's this time next week?
Yes, this time next week, we'll take it up at our regular meeting. Okay? All right. We are going to move into our next hearing, which is related to the budget and sales The county administrator has a presentation that he has done a number of times, and so I've asked him, because there are some new folks in the audience, to do it in an abbreviated version this afternoon, but we do want to highlight some of what is being contemplated in the administrator's recommendation to the county. So Jeff, take it away.
Thank you, Madam President. I will do my best to do this in an abbreviated fashion, but just, I would like to highlight quickly that this is a hearing regarding the two thousand twenty general fund budget and the recommended sales tax continuation of the quarter cent sales tax at Union Terminal that goes along with that. I highlight that because there's a lot of people interested in a lot of county programs related to job and family services, the Metropolitan Sewer District, the banks and economic development projects, some of our individual levies. This is not those. This is the general fund, this is the general fund operating budget for the county, which controls and funds activities such as the sheriff's office, the courts, board of elections, nine-one-one, the coroner, planning and development, veteran services, that type of thing. So I just want to make sure that as people are watching this, that they're aware of what we are discussing. So on September third, I delivered this, the administration's recommended budget to the Board of County Commissioners. It is balanced at two hundred and seventy-six million dollars, but does include the continuation of the quarter cent sales tax at Union Terminal. This is just a, and I'm going to go through these slides fairly quickly. Madam President, your request, just to make sure that we hit on all of them, but I won't spend a lot of time on any of them, we can always circle back if we need to. This just shows the twenty million dollar gap that we face for two thousand twenty and how that expands moving forward. A little bit about the causes of the imbalance that we currently face, it's both revenue, it's driven by decreasing and stagnating revenues, as well as some increasing expenditure pressures. You can see the local government fund, which is our primary intergovernmental revenue source, has declined roughly thirteen million dollars over the past several years. Interest earnings on county investments have declined significantly as the federal government responded to the Great Recession. Those are beginning to creep back up, but they haven't, they certainly have not returned to their pre-recession heights, nor do we expect them to anytime soon. A lot of the public safety expenditures we have in terms of running the Justice Center, running the crime lab and coroner's office, running nine-one-one, we've seen expenditure pressures on those. We just can't keep those expenditures flat forever as we have mandated court services that we have to provide. We also have around two hundred million dollars in deferred capital maintenance that we have to do on our county buildings, and you see the graph describing those pressures as well. Just a little bit about the balancing strategy, we faced the same problem in two thousand and nineteen, for the two thousand nineteen budget, and this slide shows how we responded in two thousand nineteen to that gap. We did a lot of things that were one-time fixes that will not be sustainable in the long term. We deferred capital maintenance, we used one-time resources to plug holes where we know that they won't be existing in the long run. We postponed a solution on our nine-one-one funding problem. We raised the property transfer tax by one mil to generate just over four million dollars, which the commissioners had at the time said that they had hoped to roll back in the long run. In two thousand twenty, the proposed balancing strategy is, again, continuation of the seven percent sales tax rate that is currently in effect by continuing the quarter cent Union Terminal sales tax when it expires. We also plan to roll back the property transfer fee in January of twenty-one. We continue to push back on departmental requests so that we are funding only the services that are necessary to continue mandated services and also to comply with board policy direction. We also are implementing some of these, of those initiatives over a several-year period, and we're not just implementing those all in year one primarily because the sales tax would only produce half a year's revenue in two thousand twenty-one, I'm sorry, in two thousand twenty. Some of the things that we've done in the past to continue to, to continue reductions and to continue to operate as efficiently as we can, when I meet folks who talk, who ask about the budget, a lot of times that's the first question they ask is, well, if you are going to propose a revenue solution, what have you done to, on the cost-cutting side and on the efficiency side? So this is just a few of those things. Over the years, we have eliminated positions, we've done layoffs, we've done furloughs. Budget Director Brugan provided me a slide that shows that our general fund positions[1714.41] back in 2007 were 3,048, right before we went into the Great Recession. Today, we sit at around 2,300, so roughly 700 positions coming out of the general fund over that period of time. A lot of that through attrition, some of it through layoffs and other forms of reduction. We closed a jail, we closed the Queensgate Jail, we sold buildings where we could, we consolidated departments and invested in shared services, we restructured our debt, instituted more sustainable healthcare solutions, and we invested heavily in energy efficiency and water conservation to put a downward pressure on our utility spend. I'm going to skip through the sources and uses, this is an interesting graph for perusal, but nothing that I really want to highlight here today unless we want to go back to it. I think it is important to note that we recently, the board recently had a report from an independent consultant, who, we split the costs with the CBT, the Cincinnati Business Committee and the Cincinnati Regional Business Committee, to bring in an independent consultant to do an assessment of the county's finances. And while that work is still ongoing, and we want to thank the CBC and the CRBC for assisting us with the funding of that, and we look forward to continuing to work with them, some of the highlights from Phase 1 of that study, obviously revenues have not been growing at the same rate as expenses. We did find that Hamilton County benchmarks favorably with many of our peer counties on efficiency measures. So that was one question that we had asked, and that the board had asked, in terms of if we are even to consider a revenue initiative, we want to make sure that we are, that we're doing what we should be doing in terms of running the government as efficiently as we can, at least in line with our peer counties. Our general revenue, our general fund revenues trail our peer Ohio counties on a per capita basis, and I'll show a slide here shortly, that we rely less on sales tax and more on intergovernmental sources of revenue and property taxes than do our peer counties. And the consultant also acknowledged the need for both a revenue solution and an efficiency, and to invest in additional efficiencies. This just shows what we had discussed, and that is that on a perk, on a, an overall basis, that Hamilton County relies much less on sales tax and much, to a much greater degree, on intergovernmental revenues than do a lot of our peer counties, making them much more subject to those shocks when the state decides to turn off the spigot. And also by extrapolation, we also rely more on property taxes than many of our other peers. Our level of sales tax that goes to support the general fund is also much lower than many of our peer counties. The sales tax, the locally imposed sales tax in Hamilton County is higher than what is shown here, but that's because .75, 75th of a cent, goes to fund the riverfront, the development of two stadiums on the riverfront, as well as the fix to Union Terminal. I'm going to go through that slide. Just a little bit about what the government, or what the, what the 2020 budget prioritizes. So while maintaining a solvent, balanced budget and investing in our core mandated services, we tried to hit board policy direction and address board policy direction in really three primary ways. Number one, addressing and prioritizing public safety. And prioritizing public safety in a smart way, by supporting diversion, treatment of reentry services in our Justice Center, to make sure that the Justice Center is more than just a housing facility for inmates, but that as people get into the Justice Center, they are hooked up and connected with the support services they need to ensure that they are not coming back through the system continually. We want to make sure we're sustainably funding the operation of the crime lab that we're currently building out in Blue Ash, and to fund jail management technologies and efficiencies to make sure that our public safety employees have the technology and the tools they need to run the Justice Center and our criminal justice operations efficiently and safely, to make sure that as, as we have inmates coming through, as inmates are processed through and released, and as we have public safety forces come down, dropping people off at the Justice Center, that they can get back on, get back on their beat as quickly as possible, return to their communities, be back on the street, and we can do a lot of that through investment in new technology initiatives. We also want to invest in infrastructure and technology. This is not the only picture we have of buildings that the county owns, where we have facade literally crumbling off of, of our buildings on, and onto our, onto the street below. This is the 800 Broadway Building. We have around $200 million in deferred capital maintenance that we need to invest in. So the budget focuses heavily on making sure that we can invest in those, in those fixes to county infrastructure, and also to technology improvements, again, in our public safety areas, as well as in our financial systems of the county as well. And finally, strengthening our partnerships with communities. I think, as we mentioned at the last public hearing, the budget that I put forward does not, does not intend to solve all of the problems in, in all of our 48 communities in Hamilton County, but the board has consistently approached me and the administration on how can we play a role in being a better partner with the 48 jurisdictions in the county, to help them with their efforts to revitalize Hamilton County as our, especially our inner ring suburbs continue to lose population, see reduced budgets, see crumbling infrastructures, increasing levels of poverty, et cetera. How can we help them revitalize their communities? So we put, this particular budget puts resources into being a more robust partner with our 48 communities in Hamilton County. One of the significant ways that we also do that is by rolling back our 911 detail rates, and this budget sustainably funds a permanent solution to the 911 funding problem so that we can, number one, make our 911, we can fund our 911 system in a way that is sustainable for our local communities, so that it's not cannibalizing their public safety budget, so that they can put police officers and firefighters back on the street, and that we don't establish these perverse incentives where our communities have an incentive to go out and, and publish other alternative phone numbers, so we have residents calling numbers other than 911 when they need help in service, and we want to make sure that our 911 system is not only best-in-class, but has a best-in-class funding system as well, so that we can, again, strengthen that partner with our, partnership with our local communities. Little bit about the flip side of maintaining status quo, again, I've talked about, more about what happened, what the, what the budget invests in, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this slide. In terms of timeline, we have, we've had hearings on the 3rd, on the 8th, and today on the 10th, we have a Board of County Commissioners vote scheduled on the sales tax, and also on, and potentially on the 2020 budget on Tuesday, October 15th. Should the board pass a revenue initiative through continuation of the sales tax, those collections would begin Wednesday, April 1st. Revenues would be received July of 2020, and again, they would produce roughly $20 million in 2020, a full year worth of revenue, which is roughly $40 million in 2021. So with that, Madam President, I try to rifle through this as quickly as I can. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, look forward to hearing the public comment.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that. All right, so let's get straight to the speakers' cards. Steve Ashbrook is first. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm, quite frankly, I'll cut to the chase, I'm here to speak in favor of the county administrator's plan as it relates to the county administration budget specifically, as it relates to the use of continuing the 25, the .25% sales repurposed for increased county contribution in the 911 system, specifically is the area I'm about, most qualified to speak about. The funding of the system has been a concern for 25-plus years. This is perhaps, in the fire chief's point of view, the most viable approach to a funding mechanism for 911 that has been proposed in that 25-year period. So it can be very effective. What it does is it positions the county in a way to, to be a better partner with all the communities that are spending money for police firefighters and EMS people already. They're all tied together through a 911 system by both radio and use or access by the citizens for a notice of need, and so this is the best way for the county, in our opinion, to be a partner in that process. This is an essential service. We feel strongly that the county needs to improve their contribution from the county general fund to this essential service, and that the uncertainty that's been involved every year on how we are going to fund 911, and what the county's contribution would be, what the city's detail rate would be, the workarounds that have existed, especially in law enforcement, to access 911, that, this is it. This is a wonderful opportunity, Commissioners, for all of you to act in concert, for you to act, you know, unanimously, and because I think you'll have the support of the fire chiefs with this approach to funding 911. I'd be happy to talk about 25 years of history on this, if anybody wants to hear it.
Well, we'll save that for another day, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Our next speaker is Jay Janis Jr.
Thank you. I'm here to speak on the, the budget and the sales tax, a little bit of combined. I am opposed to extension, the sales tax is indicated on the current slide up there that was discussed a few minutes ago. Many of us who have fixed incomes, seems like we're always trying to tax our way to, and there's little consideration for those that are on fixed budgets. Some of the other issues or areas I believe that this county can save, by your public records, attending many of your meetings with the agendas, I'm aware that almost every meeting, ironically, except it seems today, you're purchasing SUV vehicles through various county departments. In my opinion, some may need them, but many do not. I think they could get by with a much smaller vehicle, for example, even a two-door coupe. I don't even know if cars make, or companies make those, but there's companies in Ohio, Kentucky, Indiana, that make cars and trucks, that I think this county would support somewhat local labor, and by buying through those. We don't need a SUV for every single department, that's my opinion. Another way I notice on the bottom of your agenda is typically you approve funding for conferences, conventions, and so forth. Many are clear across the country. I think some of those may be nice, but in these challenging times for this county, I don't think, I think you could cut way back on those. There's online training, they could possibly get that training from a certified or experienced, qualified instructor in this area, college or university. And I would ask that your considerations be for those with challenged incomes, challenged budgets. Don't let people exceed their budgets. When you give them a budget at the beginning of the year, they have to live within their budget, just like we do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Denny. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Mark Denny, I'm the police chief for Corrin Township, and I appreciate this opportunity to speak to you about the communication center fees, and Administrator Aludo's recommendations to retain the .25% sales tax, and directed in part towards returning vital public safety funds back to local communities. As a communication center's largest user, this recommendation impacts us greatly. If the board approves Administrator Aludo's recommendation, Corrin Township on the police side alone would save nearly $700,000 over the next two years. To kind of put that into context, we estimate a new police officer costs us about $100,000 a year. $700,000 is the cost of 15 police cars, and it would fund our quick-response team that combats the heroin epidemic for several years, pay for mental health training, and many other bare-bones necessities. The impact of the savings would be a game changer for our community of 60,000 people. As you know, townships are very limited on how they can obtain funding. Cuts from the state and our ability or appetite of our residents to pay more property tax have made it very difficult for us to maintain the services that we work hard to provide. We have to find ways to save and responsibly spend the money that they entrust to us. Reduction in costs of this magnitude helps us delay the need to go back out to our residents for a property tax, and your decision would have a tremendous impact on the second-largest community in Hamilton County. Utilizing the existing sales tax allows the cost of the system to be fairly spread among more than just Hamilton County residents. Many of our calls for service come from and are about people who reside outside of Hamilton County but are here using our service and could help pay for those costs. The services we receive from the communication centers absolutely second to none. Director Knapp runs a superb organization with quality people, and we are very lucky to have that level of professionalism in Hamilton County. Unfortunately, Corrin has been forced to innovate and find ways to cut our expenses, our communications expenses, and we implemented a seven-digit telephone number about three years ago, and promoted that along with our residents to help reduce our fees. I think I'm out of time. But I thank the Commissioners for the opportunity to speak, and I ask that you approve this recommendation.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Chief, quick question. We've, we've talked about these issues a lot over the years.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate your advocacy for not only finding a permanent solution, but also for working together to improve public safety in Corrin Township and in the entire Hamilton County area, working with your fellow chiefs throughout the region, and working with fire and fire chiefs as well to do the right thing. Since you introduced the new, or the seven-digit number in Corrin, what kind of an impact, if any, have you noticed on either response times to calls, or any confusion that has existed in terms of residents not necessarily in Corrin Township, not necessarily knowing which number to call? You know, my point being that with, with the troubles that the township, that all the townships and the municipalities and the villages are, struggle with in terms of the detail rates and that sort of thing, the fees that are being paid to maintain the communication center, and to maintain the first-class service that is given that way. One way that costs are cut is what you've done in Corrin Township, try to make ends meet, by trying to reduce 911 calls by introducing this other number. But with that comes fragmentation and perhaps confusion by individuals on what number to call in the event of an emergency. Do you have any firsthand occurrences that you can share that Corrin Township has experienced?
We've done this for about five years now, and this is a, a constant reminder that we have to tell our citizens that that is a non-emergency number. People want to do the right thing, they want to try to help us reduce costs, and we always feel guilty telling them that there is a cost when they call the communication center, but we want them to do that if it's an emergency. So we're constantly talking to them about when's the right time to do it, and I think the more options we give people in an emergency, the worse off we are. It's not only bad for our residents, it's bad for our officers as well, because as we get that phone call internally, the dispatchers don't know where our officers are going, and it relies on that officer to remember to tell them where he's at. It just fragments that system, and the other agencies surrounding us don't know where the officers are, so the entire situation gets more dangerous because of this. And you have to weigh that, though, with the cost of, we answered 30,000 calls to 321 cops last year.
Yeah.
You could take that times detail rate and get an idea of what kind of impact that would have on Corrin's budget if we didn't do that.
Right, right.
So it was a responsible thing to do, I would like to get away from that and really push people towards the communication center for everything.
Yeah.
If that's possible.
Understood. Thank you, that's very helpful, Chief.
Thank you, Fisher.
Thank you, thanks for being here. Our next speaker is Chris Campbell. Good afternoon.
My name's Chris Campbell, I'm the police chief with the Village of Gulf Manor. This year, I also serve as the president of the Chiefs Association. I'm here today just to pass on the overwhelming support that was voiced in the last two meetings that we've had of the Chiefs. The savings to the, to the communications that would benefit every agency is huge. Just trying to budget for what the calls will be is difficult. Knowing that there's a set savings in place and forecastable is, is just a overwhelmingly good thing for every agency and police and fire. That's, that's really all I have, I was here just to express that.
Great, thank you. And I want to note that we've got a letter of support from Gulf Manor, it's from Ron Hirth, the village administrator, related to the same issue.
Yes, yes, our clerk, our counsel also unanimously, unanimously supported this budget proposal.
Okay, great, thank you.
Terrific.
Thank you.
All right.
Our next speaker is Dan Pillo.
Thank you, Commissioners, for this opportunity to say a few words on this subject, I'll be speaking on another one soon, but the Village of Addison, being a very small village, the continuation of the sales tax into public safety would be a tremendous help to us. We always operate, we have to operate as a small community on the least amount of budgetary things that we can do, and one of the larger things that's in our budget happens to be the 911 call center, and we even operate below the minimum number of calls that come through there, so we're not paying overages because we really can't afford to. But with, with the continuation of the taxes for that particular matter, it'll save our village so much. We are probably the second-lowest paying village for police officers. Hard to maintain, a steady police force, this could absolutely be such an advantage to our community. It would help our citizens, public safety is extremely important to all of us, and we certainly advocate and want to make sure that the Commissioners understand just how much, not only does it mean that to Addison, but I speak on behalf of all the small communities within the first-ranked suburbs. I'll talk a little bit more of that when we get into the hearing on, on, on the budget, but it is important, and it is important for all the communities, and I would advocate for the village, from the Village of Addison, that you would maintain that particular tax for public safety.
Thank you, thanks for being here. Yes, sir.
In terms of the village's budget, what percentage of your overall budget is taken up by the fees you pay for 911 services?
I believe, and this is going to be close, it's going to be in excess of 25%.
Incredible.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be a game changer for the things you're trying to do in Addison.
Certainly would be.
Across the board.
Yes, certainly would be.
Thank you.
So Mayor Pillow, we're having this one hearing related to both the budget and the sales tax increase that was recommended.
Oh, okay.
I didn't know if you had comments related to the budget. I'm going to give you, I'll give you an extra minute here just because I think there was some confusion about it.
I certainly do need the extra minute because I thought it was a separate comment on economic development.
Yeah, I know. I gathered that from your comment.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you. Once again, my name is Dan Pillow. I'm the mayor of the Village of Addison, and I'm also past president of the first-ranked suburbs, first suburbs consortium in southwest Ohio. Knowing the conditions and working with all the other suburbs within Hamilton County, we do know that it is important that the county continue to work hard on its economic development program. What you have proposed, what we have read, we are excited about that, very excited about keeping services, expanding services into areas of Hamilton County Development Center ready. Also, Hamilton County public, our community block programs are so important to us. We not only ask that, see that you want to continue those programs, we're asking that you expand those programs because villages like Addison depend, and many other villages in the first-ranked suburbs, depend on that money that you appropriate. We'd like to see those other programs fully funded so that they can be a bigger part of our community. It is, I have to say, is inordinate. Most people don't understand what these programs present for Addison alone. We have, oh my gosh, we've used the community development block grant to keep us afloat. There are times when we wouldn't have community development block grant, there are streets that we couldn't actually pay. Right now, they're helping us with our park project just to make ourselves a well-rounded community. We are excited that you have them in the budget. We advocate that you expand those programs and fully fund some of those. And thank you for the extra time.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. I could tell that, and Jay Janis Jr. actually thought there were two hearings too, so I'll give you another minute at the end as well, just to be fair. So, and I do want to mention that the administrators' recommended budget does have an increase in some of those community development dollars that can be so catalytic to places like Addison. Thank you. All right. Our next speaker is James Doherty. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Hi. So I want to speak on behalf of the addiction services in and outside of the jails. I was in active addiction for 18 years, from 14 till I was about early 31. And I was in and out of the jails constantly, and until this last time I was arrested and taken to jail, they had a reentry pod there, and that was available to me, and I didn't know help was out there, and people actually wanted to encourage me, wanted me to do better in and around the community. So I was released, and through the reentry pod, I was connected with other people who've been through the process of addiction and who live successful lives today. So I feel like if we can have more money in the budget for addiction services and treatment in and outside of the jail, you know, you hear more stories like mine. You know, I work in the community a lot with the addicts on the streets, and if I can get back into the jail and just speak with the people going constantly in and out and just talk with them, like, you know, I get it, I've been there, and like, these are the steps I've taken to change the direction of my life. So I believe if we had more money and more resources available to do that, you know, we can change the opioid epidemic, you know. But I just want to thank you guys for the time and the reentry pod. You know, they've been a big part of my story. They were there as soon as my feet hit the ground when I was released from jail. They gave me ample support, help, and resources. I just moved out of sober living. I was there for two and a half years. You know, I'm a responsible member of my community and society in a whole. I'm employable today. This is all from, you know, early-on steps from inside the jail. So I feel like if we have more activities or things like this inside the jail can help many more people. My one voice can reach many people, and I feel like if we have more voices like mine to reach other people and help change the trajectory of their life, we'll have more success stories.
Yeah, thank you. Congratulations to you. Yeah. Thank you for being here. There are additional dollars in the administrators' recommendation related to reentry. So thanks so much for kind of bringing that home for us. Yeah, you're a living, breathing example of what works. So thank you for being here. Congratulations. Yeah. Our next speaker is Vernon Rawls. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you for your time. Like the gentleman that spoke before me, I'm here on behalf of the Office of Reentry, and I want to definitely speak in support of the administrators' proposed budget. I am owner and operator of Exclusive Services, which is a social service agency here in Hamilton County, and we are one of the region's only integrated health services, which means that we provide mental health, substance use disorder, as well as primary health care, all under one roof. For the last eight weeks, Trina Jackson has invited us and partnered with us as an agency to go into the Justice Center to provide services. We were initially invited in to address specifically trauma. So for the past eight weeks, even though I am an executive officer in my agency, I'm also a certified clinician for mental health as well as substance use disorder. I have taken on the project personally. So for the past eight weeks, I've been working with her staff inside of the Justice Center, and this is just the impact that we've made with just one clinician, which is me. We've been able to address not only trauma, but we've also been able to address stress-related issues, decision-making skills and judgment, impulsive behavior as regarding events versus issues, being able to address issues with the inmates related to emotional maturity and male toxicity, because they oftentimes don't understand the wide range of emotions and the impulsive behavior related to that. We do a parenting track as well as a track on healthy relationships. So I implore you to please support the administrator in his proposed budget so that we can ensure continuum of care and also increased wraparound services that are also provided by my agency and other agencies to go actually into the jail on a grassroots level, boots-on-the-ground level. We definitely need your support, and we definitely need more money to continue these services. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Mr. Rawls, do you also work in terms of reinstating and reregistering individuals with respect to their right to vote and working with the Board of Elections?
Currently, we don't have anything like that that will be related to case management. Our case management track is usually more in tune with what's going on in the reentry, which is housing, which is a huge issue, employment, which is a huge issue, education. And right now, what we're doing is we're just attacking to the mental health issues that are associated with the deal. And not to segue away from your question.
Right.
But what I've found as a clinician is oftentimes the inmates are, and we know that 95% of them are going to come out of the Justice Center, but they have what's called a dual diagnosis, which means they have mental health issues and also substance use disorder. And we don't know which comes first, the chicken or the egg. We don't know which one causes the other. But in order to make these people viable citizens who would actually vote, we need to address said issues, in my opinion.
Sure.
Thank you.
And thank you for that very candid answer.
Yes, sir.
Coming back.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Our next speaker is Deb Carney. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to speak. This is my third public hearing, so I'm not going to go over what I already talked about. I do want to talk about leveraging your funds with federal funds. It works like this: county administration, county funds, county appropriations, federal funds. One works hand in hand. But also with that, there's also human talent, and the human talent is our volunteers. We train volunteers every day at Extension. 4-H volunteers go through a rigorous report system where they have to be fingerprinted. We check backgrounds to make sure they are qualified to work with our young adults in the county. Also, our master gardener volunteers. And the reason I'm dressed casual today, because I'm at the Cincinnati Zoo with 23 master gardener volunteer interns working to make Hamilton County beautiful. The zoo and botanical gardens offers a wide variety of plants that we need to diagnose to see how they're growing, to see how they are, if there's any disease management, and we learn these things through Ohio State. When you have a problem with your plants, with your trees, or if you have a bug you cannot identify, who do you call? You call Ohio State, and we'll get you the answer. And most of the time when you call, you get a volunteer on the line that went through our program. So also, I just wanted to say today, thank you for your continued support. You know, we also have 4-H as part of us, but we have a vast variety of programs that we offer the community in Hamilton County. Thank you.
Thank you. We're jealous of your dress code, by the way.
We're in the dirt.
There you go. Thank you for being here. Lynda Fitzgerald is our next speaker. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I am the Economic Development Director for the city of Redding, and I know that you are intimately aware of the unique challenges facing first suburb communities: ground fields, underutilized sites, and aging infrastructure. So I'm not here today to tell you who we are, you already know that. But I am here today to ask that you continue to support the efforts of your constituent communities to create jobs and investment by providing funding to our economic development partners, namely, Hamilton County Development Company, Reddy Cincinnati, and the Port Authority. I'd like to give you just a couple examples of how these county-funded partners have helped transform underutilized properties in the city of Redding and bring these sites back on the tax rolls. First of all, the Port Authority. We are excited to tell you that they are purchasing an abandoned chemical site in the city of Redding to develop it into a vibrant industrial park that will create substantial jobs and new investment. This project incurred a lot of substantial cost upfront during the due diligence process, and without your capital support of the port, I do not think this project would be a reality today. Reddy Cincinnati, we are working, they are working with the city, with Hamilton County Community Development Department through the CDAP program, HCDC, and ODOT to help redevelop about 12 underutilized acres in our community. And the first tenant is already committed. It's an existing business, General Tool. They will create 25 jobs, and it will allow them to meet a contract that they have with the Navy. So I've got one second left. That's not so good. If I can just go to my ending, I would appreciate that. You have the right people in place. You really do. And they are undaunted warriors and leaders in economic development, and you have communities that want to work with them. And so we just ask that, you know, these folks have earned our respect. I forgot, Hamilton County Community, or Hamilton County Development Company, they have worked with us for 37 years as our partners in economic development. They're phenomenal. So we, they've earned our respect, and we ask that you show continued support of them through the 2020 budget.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me go over.
Yeah, thanks for being here.
I'm very excited about this.
Thank you for your patience. Our next speaker is Lee Zwanke. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm a councilman for the city of Blue Ash and also a former mayor for the city, but I'm here in my capacity today as chairman of the Hamilton County Communication Center Policy Board. I have a letter here I wish to read, put in the record.
Sure.
Beginning at day two. "I support the county administrators' recommended general fund budget. The Hamilton County Communication Center has been serving the residents of Hamilton County since 1949. Users of the communication center value the work done by these men and women each and every day. It is well-known that our communication center has been a model for shared services for decades. The technology and infrastructure necessary to operate a safe and dependable system are expensive. Users appreciate the investment that the county has put into our center over the years. Unfortunately, as costs rise and user fees increase, many municipalities are faced with making tough decisions to control their costs in their community. As a result, the user fee formula has been, has had drastic fluctuations and has become a disincentive to utilizing our shared services. Fortunately, this proposed budget addresses this user fee issue and returns much-needed funding back to the municipalities throughout the county. This plan will reduce the incentive for our community to avoid the communication center and will once again return the communication center to the shared services model that works for everyone. For some of our user communities, the two-year reduction equates to a significant dollar, to significant dollar figures that can be turned around and used to solidify public safety. I encourage the Commissioners to adopt the county administrators' recommendations. Users of the Hamilton County Communication Center appreciate the long-term commitment and professional public safety communications in Hamilton County." So, thank you.
Perfect timing. Yeah. All right. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Would you give us that letter for our?
Absolutely.
Yeah, public record. Thank you.
You timed it exactly.
Yeah, that's right. It was very well done.
I'll work on it.
Very well done.
Thank you.
So Jay Janis Jr., I told you that you could only have two minutes, but we've given others more. Do you, would you like to come forward again?
Thank you. I'm good.
You're good to go? Okay. Thank you, Lee. Appreciate it. All right. That is, is there anybody else in the room that would like to speak as part of the budget hearing or the sales tax hearing? All right. Very good. Thank you all for being here. We really appreciate the input. It's really important to us. So thank you. Do I need to move to close the hearings?
Close now.
All right. I'm going to move to, all right, close both the hearing to consider options for levying county sales tax, sales and use tax, and the hearing to consider the 2020 Hamilton County budget.
Second.
Commissioner Dennyham?
Yes.
Commissioner Somer Odumis?
Yes.
Commissioner Portune?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. All right. We will move then back up in our agenda. We've done public comment already. We'll move to comments and motions of Commissioners. Commissioner Somer Odumis?
Madam President, I'll defer my comments for next week.
Okay. Commissioner Portune?
Nothing today. Thank you.
Very good. Boy, you guys are making me look bad here. So I have one item, and then I have an announcement. So the item is the budget memo that I wanted to bring forward from my office. Commissioner Portune has provided his. We have an expectation. Commissioner Somer Odumis will do hers as well. So I just wanted to provide this to the members of the board. Oh, sorry.
No, I'm sorry. I forgive me for interrupting. I'll wait.
After? Okay. Very good. All right. So I am not going to go through all of this, but I do want to just briefly outline some of my kind of high-level thoughts here related to the administrators' recommended budget and want to recognize also the work of the CRO study and the partnership with the CBC, CRBC, in helping us do that. I think that through that exercise, at least through Phase 1, we have learned that we have a need for increased revenue, but we also have a need to address some inefficiencies throughout the county. And so the memo I've offered kind of addresses both of those things. Top priorities being the same as they always have been, you know, throughout all these budget conversations. It's basic public safety, it's economic development, it is the partnership with local communities, it's workforce, and it's inclusion. And so I've broken out the memo under some of those headings. A couple of highlights that I just want to point out. I think it's been made very obvious that we need some investment in our IT infrastructure in the county. This was a major concern related to the CRO report, and anecdotally, I've heard that from some of our partners, other elected officials in the county. And so I, in this memo, have kind of recognized that need and hope that we, through this budget cycle, will start to address some of those needs. I also recognize that there might have to be some kind of capital investment to start that out, but in the long term, we'll see cost savings and efficiencies. Then the memo moves into public safety. As has been noted, so much of the budget is related to public safety, whether it's the sheriff or the coroner or the courts, and so we need to continue to invest. Then, the memo moves into public safety. As has been noted, so much of the budget is related to public safety, whether it's the sheriff, or the coroner, or the courts, and so, we need to continue to invest in those departments and make sure that they are funded to levels that are adequate and safe on all counts. And so, I go into a little bit of that in there, and also talk about the 911 fees that we just heard a lot about with our local partners, and trying to get us up to, or rather, get them down to a range that is affordable for them, but continues this coordinated effort of the county, and not only trying to be a good partner, but also augment what we know is a really great 911 system that's run by the county, and it's coordinated throughout the county. Talks a little bit about reentry in the great work that's going on there, we just heard about that as well. Mental health and addiction treatment. Remember, we're expanding the Justice Center, and we need to make sure that we are fully funded through personnel to take advantage of those extra 90 beds. Talk a little bit about the heroin coalition and the ongoing work there with particularly the Quick Response Team. And then, it moves into the economic development portion, which talks a lot about spurring economic growth in our local communities, which, again, we just heard about, both in Reading and Addison. And then, lastly, it talks about adequately funding county employees so that we don't have the churn that we've seen in so many of our departments, where people basically get here, we train them well, and then they leave for other places that pay better wages than we do. And I also talk about the continued work with the Office of Inclusion and the Commission on Women and Girls. And so, that is the memo in a nutshell, but I did wanna advance that as we continue to talk about our priorities related to the budget, and hope Commissioner to see your memo coming in shortly. Is it by Friday, did you say?
Right.
Yeah, by tomorrow. So, we'll look forward to that. And then, the Administrator's task will be to take a look at all three of the budget memos, come to some kind of a consolidated approach related to the recommendations and priorities of the board, and then, you know, manage to put those into the recommendation that we'll have in front of us next Tuesday. So, that is the process as it sits today. So, that I had, and then I have one announcement. There is a celebration tonight of the Day of the Girl. The Commission on Women and Girls, girls are a huge part of this celebration, and they have taken on a leadership role. They are going to be panelists, they are going to be introducing people, they are gonna be part of workshops, and so, it's going to be held at the Sawyer Point Building down on the riverfront at 5:30 this afternoon. You know, Blink is also happening. I'm not sure how congested it's gonna be down there, but anyway, that's where it is. We may adjourn to the rooftop after we conclude the program, but it's a really exciting opportunity for these girls, and so, I would encourage anybody that would like to attend to do so. It's free, open to the public at 5:30 this afternoon. With that, I'm finished. Commissioner Portune.
Madam President, thank you. There was a by leave that I did, I do need to bring forward today, 'cause I promised a citizen I would do this.
Okay.
So, I didn't wanna overlook that. And it has to do with action that's been taken in other parts of Ohio as well as around the country. What was shared with me was an ordinance that was adopted by Cuyahoga County. Now, their, their system of government is a little different than ours. They are a charter county, so they can adopt laws and ordinances under their charter. And so, for us to do something would have to be a little bit different related to this. But I will introduce formally today, get, make sure everybody has a copy of it, of what Cuyahoga County did. And it has to do with a disposable bag ban. Things would be, would work perhaps a little different here. Of course, only, again, municipalities or home rural townships would have the ability to do that. But the idea is perhaps for us, via resolution, to encourage a coordinated effort toward the reduction of the use of disposable bags. And this is one of the great environmental crises that's facing the planet these days in how disposable bags are spoiling local environment, lakes, streams, rivers. What's going on in the oceans is truly extraordinary, where you have these, in essence, floating continents of disposable bags that are visible from outer space, the International Space Station and things like that, as they are presenting incredible environmental hazards to natural wildlife throughout, both on land as well as in the water. This is a movement that I think is going to have significant sustainability in our country and elsewhere around the world. So, again, this is not in the format that we would need to consider it. I'd like to work with both offices on how we can put our spearheading of this into actionable form that would help us be a part of a coalition of the other 40, of the 49 jurisdictions in Hamilton County to move forward on this. And with that, that is my by leave. But thank you, Madam President, for allowing me to come back to this.
I appreciate it. And then, since I let you do it, I'm gonna do it myself. So, I mentioned that we, my office received a letter of support from Gulf Manor related to the sales tax increase in the Administrator's recommendation. I don't know, this did go to all three offices, so I just wanna highlight that. I've also got a letter of support for the Administrator's budget by Lakshmi Samarko, who is the county coroner. She testified at a previous hearing. And I also have another letter of support from Norb Nadal, who is the county recorder. So, I will enter all three of these for the record. Okay? All right, very good. Thank you. Administrator Eludo.
Thank you, Madam President. We do have a few by leaves here today for you. I think actually, it's just one, it is, I believe it's just a, well, actually, it is a resolution. Resolution awarding a contract to lowest and best bidder, John R. Jurgensen Company for Harrison Road Improvement located in Green Township, Hamilton County, Ohio, Project Number 501-908. I believe Ted Hubbard is still here, so he's here to speak about this if he's, feels needed.
First of all, I wanna thank the Administration and the Board for allowing us to bring this by leave forward. This is a very important project. As you know, Harrison Road is quite bumpy between I-74 and Veterans Park. We did a little experiment years ago between white topping and asphalt, and quite frankly, the asphalt pavement is okay, but it's not great. We won an award because the white topping actually disintegrated faster, so, anyway. But the point is, there's also serious drainage problems at the, in the interchange area at Old Rybolt and Harrison, and this will take care of those problems. And we, we really need to get started this year. I'd like the construction to start. So, that's why we asked to accelerate your Board's review and consideration so that we can get a pre-construction meeting scheduled and get the work started.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
No questions.
Very good. I'm gonna move that we approve of the resolution awarding the contract to the lowest and best bidder, Jay, oh, I'm sorry, John R. Jurgensen Company for the Harrison Road Improvement located in Green Township, Hamilton County, Ohio, Project 501-908.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehaus.
Yes.
Commissioner Somar Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Portune.
Yes.
Thank you. That is?
That's basically it, Commissioners. Other than just, again, techo, your thoughts, Commissioner Dreehaus, about as I, as we continue to get the Commission Office's input on the budget, we'll work over the next several days and into early next week on a balancing resolution that will come forward on Tuesday as it relates to the budget. Again, there will also be, we have, we've noticed two sales tax options. The Board is not committed to any of those at this point in time, but as we veer towards Tuesday, we'll be in continued communication with each office around the level and to the degree that there is different balancing options required. Because of that, we'll work with each office on that prior to Tuesday.
Great, thank you. Thank you for your work, Jeff, and thank you to the Budget Office, John and Holly in particular, for all the work that you're doing. All right, let's move to the regular agenda items, the engineer, Ted, just up and down here today. You've got items one through four.
Thank you. Thank you, Denise. Item one pertains to a resolution, actually, that would set a hearing date for a name change of a road in Coleraine Township, and that's November 7, 2019 at 1:15, Heritage Way Drive to Dale Woods Way. And this is being actually advanced with the strong effort of Coleraine Township. Item two pertains to a resolution that would award a job for the Summit Road Slide Correction. Many of you drive down I-75, if you, when you get to the, just past the Reagan Highway Interchange, if you look to the left, you'll see a rather significant slide, and this is something that needs to be addressed immediately. And so, we would obviously recommend your Board's consideration and approval for the Slide, for the Slide Correction Project, awarding the Slide Correction Project. Item three is just, is just notification that we are submitting descriptions and other documents for the establishment of Kugler Mill. There's no action, we're just submitting it to you. Obviously, you have a, you know, you're gonna continue the hearing. If some adjustments are needed, we can deal with that in the future, but we are submitting the documentation. Item four pertains to the award of a job for the rehabilitation improvement of race road, and this goes from Boomer Road to Windmere. It also includes the rehabilitation of a bridge, and those of you who live in Green Township know that is a roadway that is in need of repair. So, we're glad to be able to advance that project, and that's another project we, we've done in cooperation with Green Township. They've been great partners. With that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Are there any questions or comments?
Madam President, I know I had talked to Ted about the vendors and their occurrences as it relates to what projects they've been allocated for, so I appreciate you giving me that email. I see Jurgensen was on the by leave as receiving a project, and now they're also on item four. But you made it clear also, you may have received five projects, and somebody else only received, maybe received 10, but the five were large projects, so you can't really look at the numbers, so.
Well, we do, we do, we have to, we bid this in accordance with the laws, you know. I know, and so, it's the lowest and best bidder. And rarely has the lowest bidder been rejected. Usually, it's because there was a performance problem somewhere, you know, and I've only known a few times where that's happened.
Sure.
And it's somewhat dangerous. You better have a good reason for it. But you're right, they, yeah, I didn't, we don't, you know, one of the contractors I mentioned had three very large projects, I mean, so, and I don't wanna mention the other contractors that didn't get the job necessarily, but, but the point is, you're right, it, some of the jobs that the others already have, they already have work and they're large jobs. One thing, real quick, and I know this has been a long meeting, but one of the problems we're seeing is that the costs are going up, and it's because there is a real need for trade, people in the trades. And I would encourage anybody who is a young person, if they don't think they wanna go to college right now, go, you know, go to Cincinnati State, go to trade school. Trades are very, very important. CDLs are important, Commercial Driver's License. I talked to the African-American Chamber about this several months ago, and, and the Chamber actually expressed, some of the members were expressing the same problems, hard to get people in the trade. So, there's definitely a need. And since I'm talking, one other thing I wanna announce, and I know Commissioner Demas was with me today at OKI, we got $6 million more dollars for the Western Hills Viaduct. The Board of Directors approved it, and I know Todd, I talked, you know, so that's good news. We are whittling our way in track. We anticipate getting some more money from track, too, so, you know, we chip away.
You'll have to give us the running total.
Please, we're over $100 million. I mean, we're, we're, we're getting, you know, we're getting north of $100 million now, so that's, that's good. But we, we need a lot of help, and we need ODOT to work with us, and I'm glad that the new director is willing to meet with us. We need help to get the interchange with I-75 under serious consideration by ODOT. We need serious commitment so that we have that regional argument, and that is extremely critical if we're gonna compete on a national level with projects that involve, you know, interstate highways and international borders. I mean, that's who we're competing with, and so, we definitely need to have that strong regional reach and commitment from ODOT that that interchange is going to happen, hopefully simultaneously with the Western Hills Viaduct. That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I know it's been a long meeting.
Well, I wanted to follow up just a little bit on the comment, 'cause I too noticed that the same vendor was getting to. But I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I know we have to take the lowest and best bidder, but the work of Robert Bell hopefully is helping expand the pool of people that apply to begin with, 'cause I think one way to address, if there's a lack of participation, then a lot of times you're gonna end up with the same folks winning the bids. If there's a larger pool perhaps, then other people have an opportunity, if they're aware of the opportunities to bid. And so, that's the work that Robert's doing to try to expand the groups of people, not necessarily related to these projects, but all projects that are led by the county to say, hey, we've got some opportunities here, and we wanna make sure everybody is aware of those opportunities and takes that, the time to bid, and maybe be selected in the long run.
We do, we do make sure it's on the website, we do advertise in the paper, and of course, that's according to the code, the Ohio Rise Code. All these, you know, all of the, all of our projects are advertised.
Yeah, I know, but we need to encourage folks to do that.
I'm all for that. Oh, I, yeah, and I have no problem with that, but I'm just saying, we wanna.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Yeah.
Sure.
Madam President.
I'm sorry.
I wanted to build on that discussion as well, and as a number of people may know in the Administration at least, maybe less so with the Commission, although this did come up during the discussion around the Community Benefits Agreement for the Crime Lab and work that was done there. But I have tried for the better part of almost a decade to have the county adopt policy that gives structure and objective criteria to how to define and best as a part of the statute, lowest and best. And I've taken that to Director Bell as well. The decision on whether to incorporate that work into the Crime Lab was, the Crime Lab was too far down the road in terms of discussion around the elements to try to introduce anything else of substance into that. But this remains an element of county policy that I continue to feel very strongly about, and that is that we work very, very hard to come up with policy that provides an objective approach to how to define and best. 'Cause the lowest bidder is an important element, no one doubts or disputes that, but the lowest bidder may not be the best bidder for a number of reasons that go beyond performance on a prior project. And there are a lot of elements that are of extreme importance to the county as matters of accomplishing policy objectives, that if we don't look to how to structurally include those in our application of lowest and best, you know, all of course done with respect to this in an approach that is perfectly legal and defensible in a court of law. But, but there is a lot of county policy that I think that we could be more forceful implementers of that are addressed almost daily in the world of contracting and contracts, where the failure of having any definition that will apply case in, you know, contract in, contract out, as to what and best means, as Hamilton County has lawfully determined it to be, we're losing out on opportunities to have a tremendous impact in the world of contracting and advancing our policies. So, I'd like to recirculate those concepts to ensure that they are fresh on people's minds. Again, continuing to work with Director Bell on how his, his office may carry the lead on that in working to get that done.
My only comment is, I think we need more people in the field. I think what's happening is we're having a very hard time finding people who are in the fields, even just CDL drivers. We're, you know, Denise, you mentioned that we're sort of training people, and then they go somewhere else. We see that with our highway workers. And the thing is, I mean, we're kinda like, no offense to Miami University, they used to call it the cradle of coaches, you know, and we're sort of the cradle of employees to some degree. We train them, and then somebody else takes them, and we, so that is an issue, but we also need people in that field. That's my point, and I try to encourage people to go into construction, into plumbing, and electric, to be an electrician. You can make a real good living, and you don't have to, you don't have to necessarily go to college for four years or go $100,000 into debt, you know. I was fortunate enough when I was growing up to be able to go to a school that had a co-op program, and before that, I worked in a paper mill, you know, at night, and that made it happen, you know. I grew up in Finney Town, of course. And, but my point in the whole thing is, not everybody gets that opportunity. Industry's coming back, granted, but they don't have the industrial jobs, the industrial jobs don't exist today like they did in the 70s in Lachland and in. in Redding and places like that. So, I would encourage people to consider the trades, and consider construction, because I do think there's opportunity. And getting a CDL license, you know, to drive a truck, I think there are real opportunities there. So, anyway, I'm going on, but I do think that's important.
And Madam President, just to kind of talk about what you guys were just saying earlier, I talked to Robert Bell right before the meeting, so we'll have to clarify some things. But as it relates to contracts that are obtained that are $100,000 or less, he just gets a notification of those contracts, and he's not as involved in the contracts that are more, that are worth more. So, we certainly want to get him involved, not necessarily with you, Ted, but we definitely want to get him involved so he's involved in those SBUs that come up that are $100,000 and less. And he says he basically just gets a notification of who's been given the job. So, we want him to have a little bit more involvement in the smaller ones also.
All right, thank you.
Well, thank you for letting me speak on all of this.
Hold on, we haven't passed your items yet, Ted.
I know.
So, are there any other comments or questions related to the items one through four, in which case I will move to approve of regular agenda items one through four?
Second.
Commissioner Dreehaus?
Yes.
Commissioner Sumaro Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Portune?
Yes.
Thank you, thanks.
And we're done, and we got the by-leave passed already, so we're good.
Thank you.
Have a great afternoon.
You too.
All right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. We've got items five through 15. Are there any questions or comments?
I have no questions, Madam President.
No questions.
All right, very good. I will move that we approve of items five through 15 on the consent agenda.
Oh, Madam President, actually, I do.
Okay.
Quick question. Item number six, the resolution authorizing an agreement for Cradle Cincinnati. Is that sort of a, you know, backdated, sort of covering all of 2019, or is this a new contract moving forward through all of the balance of 19 and probably the first three quarters of 2020?
Commissioner, I believe this is also, this also relates to the smoking cessation program through...
Oh, okay.
Through Cincinnati Children's Hospital Medical Center. So...
I got it, okay.
And we appropriated funding for that last week. I believe this is the contract.
That's, okay, that's, that connect, all right, never mind, thank you.
Got it, okay. All right, very good. Any other comments or questions, in which case I will move to approve of items five through 15. I think, actually, I already did that.
Right.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Dreehaus?
Yes.
Commissioner Sumaro Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Portune?
Yes.
Thank you. We've got a travel item, requesting authorization to travel at the county's expense. The engineer's got three employees going to Mason, Ohio. I'm going to move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehaus?
Yes.
Commissioner Sumaro Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Portune?
Yes.
Thank you. We have no executive sessions today. Delightful. So, I'm going to move to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehaus?
Yes.
Commissioner Sumaro Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Portune?
Yes.
Thank you.